I, I don't know if you can hear, but there's no uh sound.
Can you hear us now?
Trustee Ahuna, can you hear us? Yes, he can.
Trustees, you have a phone.
Okay. Aloha, my call call. This meeting can be viewed via live stream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/live. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we are using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you will be able to watch and listen to the proceedings. And if you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. Please raise your hand to indicate that you would like to speak. We will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. This may take a few seconds. We appreciate your patience. As a panelist, you have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. Once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. Joining us in addition to our Board of Trustees, at the board table, we also have Richard Naevi Wurteman, our Board Counsel. Uh, joining me on my team here, we have Summer Silva, Board of Trustees Chief of Staff, uh, Elena Young, the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Board of Trustees, and Lehuwa Itokazu, Board Secretary, as well as many trustee aides and secretaries that support our trustees every single day. Also here at the board table is our Kapo Hana, our CEO, our Administrator Stacy Ferrera. I'd like to recognize her. Introduce any of her executive team that's with us today as well.
Aloha, Kakahiaka, uh Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees. Joining us today in person and online, we have our Chief Operating Officer Keahau Puu, our Endowment Director Ryan Lee, Financial Analyst Grace Chen, Interim Corporation Counsel Everett Ota, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nichi Ozawa, HR Director Corey Nakamoto, Lead Compliance Specialist Kamakana Ferrera, Director of Research and Evaluation Carla Hostetter, Director of Communications Bill Brennan, Interim IT Director Kevin Chalk, and IT Assistant Atska Ro. Mahalo.
Mahalo Kapo Hana, and we'd also like to welcome uh those from our community, our beneficiaries. Mahalo Nui Loa for taking the time to come and join us in person today. We sincerely appreciate your presence and also for those online who are OHA beneficiaries that are here to um observe or maybe provide some feedback for us today as well. Trustees, we have um two very, very important items on our agenda today. Uh, it's one of the reasons why I mahalo you for um allowing the board to meet an hour earlier um than we normally are scheduled to meet, uh because I think the uh two agenda items in front of us um will warrant very um good spirited discussion and and that's uh and that's what um this process is for. So I'm looking forward to that. But before we get to those items, I want to move to our new business uh which will be the Kapo Hana CEO Administrative Update on any OHA activities. And before we hand it off to Kapo Hana, Lehuwa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, Chair recognizes Kapo Hana for the uh Kapo Hana update.
Mahalo Chair. Um, I don't have a a formal update. Um, I've been out of the office for the last two weeks. Um, however, I do want to just start by thanking um our executive leadership team for holding down the office while I was away. Um, this was a very critical time as we were assembling our various budgets um that we started presenting out to the board yesterday. I thought it went extremely well, and I think that is a reflection of the good work, the hard work that was put in over the, you know, the last actually months of preparation, but certainly all coming together um over the last week. So I I just want to mahalo our team for that. Keahau Puu, in in particular, Ramona and and Grace um for making sure that um what we presented to you was a professional deliverable, and I think that um that came across yesterday. And I expect it to be the same for all the other presentations. Um, while I was out for the last two weeks, I was away on a trip um paid for by the Omidir Fellows Program, which I am a fellow, and um my goal was to visit Palau and Aotearoa, um our Polynesian cousins, our Micronesian cousins, and it was to really research and start to document successful models of indigenous governance and wanted to be able to bring that back um to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, to this board. And I will have a robust um and comprehensive report, an exciting one. I learned a lot. I I was able to meet both with um their, what I would consider their democratic government um government leaders, but more importantly, the indigenous leaders. And um I think that there is an opportunity from uh that I learned and I I think that I can um share with uh the board um the lessons that they learned so that we can um, you know, leverage that, leverage that intel and that uh Ivi Kupuna, I mean, excuse me, Ike Kupuna, um so that as we continue our work here on behalf of the Lahui, um I think it's an exciting time. I think this this is the leadership, this is the board that is really going to take um our self-governance, both at an individual uh Kanaka level, but also as a Lahui. And so exciting time, and I look forward to presenting that report out to you. Um, I'm gonna say hopefully in in the next two weeks, but um I'll ask a little bit of grace if I if I don't meet that timeline, but excited to share out. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you, um Stacy, and I'll also um mahalo uh our Budget and Finance Chair Lapa and her team for leading us through what I thought was a very successful day yesterday. Looking forward to next week and mahalo to all the hard and working OHA staff that are putting together their presentations for the board. I think this is a fantastic process that we're going through, and I think at the end of the day, we're going to have a really good budget to bring before um our Board of Trustees and ultimately our beneficiaries at the end of June. So thank you for your hard work on that. Look forward to next week. Okay, uh then we will move on to the two major items on our agenda. And before we do that, um you know, this is something uh maybe a little out of the ordinary or 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 unique that we're doing today and that um we are encouraging to the max extent possible uh and through Kapo Hana's support um the participation of our most valuable assets here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and that's our staff. Um, the over hundred and thirty or so current employees uh throughout the state, um the majority of which are here on Island of Oahu that do the hard work for our beneficiaries and our Lahui um every single day. And so um because these two agenda items um and we've basically cleared the agenda from what we would normally have in terms of sponsorships and and other agenda items so that we can be fresh and focus on these two very important items uh over the next few hours. And we've encouraged participation from our OHA staff to do that. For those that are here in the room or those that um may be watching online at your at your workstations, I want to reiterate the message um uh sent by our Kapo Hana a few days ago, um that we encourage your participation, we welcome your participation, um that this is a a safe space for you to um come in front of the board. I know it can be a little uh intimidating sometimes, but but it it shouldn't be. And uh you know, we value your input, your feedback. Um, I I truly believe this is a priority item and it takes precedence over non-urgent items. You do not need to take leave today to come in front of the board and and testify. Nothing you say will be used against you in any performance evaluations. You have my word on that. Um, and you do not need permission from your director or your manager to be here today to testify. Kapo Hana's memo supersedes that and clearly articulates that we want you to participate. So for those of you that are here, for those of you that signed up to speak, mahalo Nui Loa for coming, for those of you that might still be on the fence or might not be here on Oahu and might want to testify virtually, we encourage you to do that. We are here with open hearts and open ears and ready to um uh hear your um your feedback and your your um manao on the two very, very important bodies of work that are in front of us uh that we've been working on for for several months now. So I hope I hope that's clear and that message resonates throughout um our our Ohana here at OHA. So the first action item um will be action item number twenty-five zero seven. This is um for the Board of Trustees to accept the report summary from the Ad-Hoc Committee to examine OHA staff salaries. It was dated May second, twenty twenty-five, and to adopt the Ad-Hoc Committee's staff salary recommendations and preliminary personal budgets uh for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six and for the fiscal year uh twenty twenty-seven biennial budget. Before I hand it off to uh the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee, Lehuwa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item? Uh, that would be part of the general public.
Yes, part of the general public. I have Jermaine Myers.
Okay. Let's recognize Jermaine and then I will uh recognize our Chair. Aloha, Jermaine.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Aloha Jermaine.
Is it okay to testify on this agenda item?
Absolutely. Yes, you're recognized, Jermaine.
Mahalo. Aloha Chair Kahele, Vice Chair Souza, and Honorable Trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers. I'm an OHA beneficiary for Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. I'm also a Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead Lasi. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify on action item BOT twenty-five dash zero seven, accept the summary from the Ad-Hoc Committee to examine OHA staff salaries and adopt the Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendations. Chair Kahle, I believe the Ad-Hoc Committee falls under Sunshine Laws Permitted Interaction Group, PIG, and according to the rules, the PIG findings and recommendations cannot be transmitted and adopted at the same meeting. This is meeting number two for the Ad-Hoc, and therefore the PIG's findings and recommendations should only be given to the BOT and public for review only. At a future BOT meeting, number three is when the PIG's findings and recommendations can be agendaized for action. I hope legal can provide clarity to the BOT of my understanding or misunderstanding. Under number one, proposed actions, it references an attachment A. The Ad-Hoc Committee's staff salary recommendations and preliminary personnel budgets for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven biennial budget as set forth in attachment A. Unfortunately, attachment A was not included with today's meeting folder packet. May I kindly request for a copy of attachment A through the UIPA process, please? Trustees, since two thousand and eleven and every two years since, Civil Beat publish publishes a database of Hawaii State employees' salaries. The database includes the salary of all state employees, including OHA, by name of employee and the title of their position. I would like to receive a copy of attachment A so that I can review how the Ad-Hoc Committee addressed their three priorities and objectives as outlined in the report as follows. Number one, address existing pay inequities for similar work duties and or positions across OHA. Number two, raise living wages of OHA staff to better cope with Hawaii's high cost of living, combat the ongoing dispora of native Hawaiians and Hawaii residents from Hawaii, and close to, close the pay gap between OHA's executive leadership and its frontline workers who are principally responsible for engaging with OHA beneficiaries to fulfill and discharge OHA's mission. And number three, positioning OHA to be Hawaii's employer of choice to attract and support Hawaii's best and brightest minds to protect OHA's trust assets and serve OHA beneficiaries as prudently and effectively as possible. The Ad-Hoc Committee recommended tapered salary increases with a table of positions currently making sixty thousand to ninety-nine, sixty thousand and below to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, and increases ranging from twelve percent to twenty-two percent. I recommend the percentages be reevaluated. For example, a position currently making sixty thousand dollars would receive an increase of twenty-two percent, taking their pay to seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars. A position currently making sixty thousand and one dollar would receive an increase of eighteen percent, taking their pay to seventy thousand eight hundred and one dollar. There's a discrepancy. The sixty thousand dollar person would now make seventy-three thousand two hundred, and the sixty thousand and one dollar person would make seventy thousand eight hundred and one dollar less pay. This occurs at each level where some of the lower level pay positions will actually exceed the level above them due to the percentage of increase. The suggested current pay ranges need to be changed. I suggest you expand the current pay range or decrease the percentages. And someone also needs to evaluate if the highest scale, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, will exceed someone in the higher grade after the twelve percent increases added. Kea Koapu, God bless all of you.
Thank you, Jermaine. All right. What I'd like to do, Trustees, is recognize Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee, uh Chair Souza, to um explain the committee's work, um how you came to the conclusions you came with, welcome to use some of the support staff that uh you worked with. Obviously, our Chair Emerita Lindsay was a key part of that, as well as Corey Nakamoto, our Director of Human Resources. Um, and and before we start, I just want to mahalo you for all the hard work that um yourself, Chair Emerita Lindsay and Corey put into um uh, you're very, very deliberate and I think what um very thoughtful recommendations and report that you guys came up with. So we'll do that. Uh, and then we can um see if there's anyone uh that would like to testify OHA staff on this uh item, and then we'll um bring it to the table for board questions and discussion. That's okay. So at the, at this time, the Chair recognizes the Ad-Hoc Committee um on OHA staff salaries. Um, the Chairman uh Trustee Souza.
Mahalo Chair and all, mahalo members of the board, as well as uh employees and members of the public. I love to see the room this packed every time, which means, you know, the last time I saw this room, I think this pack was when we talked about land transfers. So we know all the issues that is very, very impactful for our beneficiaries and our people. And so mahalo Nui for being here today. Um, you know, I I want to mahalo first of all, um this board um for supporting this Ad-Hoc Committee. It wasn't an easy task. We didn't take it lightly. Um, and so thank you. We got to take a deeper dive into what we value, something we value. Mister uh, you know, Chair Kahle uh stressed this earlier. I mean, our employees for being here. Yeah, um, it's hard when you talk about value and and w- we initially think about the person. This Ad-Hoc Committee didn't think about that. We had to think about the position. Right? That was our focus the entire time, not the person, the position. Um, future positions that need to be filled, future talent that we want to bring here to OHA and our current employees who strive every day to make this place better for beneficiaries. And so um aside that, from that, I want to, as the Chair of the Committee, I want to thank our members, uh Vice Chair, Trustee Lindsay, um and also our HR Director, Corey Nakamoto. Uh, like I said, it wasn't an easy task, uh, a whole bunch of back and forth. Um, there's some disagreements at times, which was healthy for this committee, I truly believe, which led us to opportunities to go back and do more research uh and learn and 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 compromise. And I think that should happen on on the daily here at OHA. And so it was a great opportunity for all of us, a learning experience. I also want to shine light um on the support staff and 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 uh express my heartfelt gratitude to um our Chief of Staff, Summer Silva, uh my staff, Rochelle Kim, Kawi Robello, as well as Chair Hulu staff, uh Kanani Iaya, contributed to a lot of the heavy lifting uh on this committee. Um, you know, one positive thing that did come out of this is now Hulu and I both have our HR certifications. So if you guys have any HR issues, please, we have an open door policy. And uh, no, but uh joking aside, um initially, when Chair recommended this Ad-Hoc Committee, it was to address the the pay disparity across this organization. And looking into outside organizations, we want to strive to be the employer of choice, right? We want to support our employees, not retain. We want to support, right? And we want to recruit new talent. And so overall, that's what this committee strives to do. And Mister Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to give a high-level summary of what's in the report. I know trustees, you guys got to go over the report. I'm sure members of the repu- uh public got to see it. Um, anyway, this Ad-Hoc Committee, um um, we strive to address existing pay equities, inequities, right, across OHA. Um, number two, we raise, we strive to um raise living wages, right, of OHA staff to better cope with Hawaii's high cost of living, which we all address all the time. Uh, combat the ongoing diaspora of our people, which Trustee Galutari always points out is a problem. Um, and to close a gap between OHA's executive leadership and its frontline workers who are principally responsible for engaging with OHA's beneficiaries to fulfill and discharge OHA's mission. Um, and number three, to position OHA to be Hawaii's employer of choice, uh to attract and support Hawaii's best and brightest minds and to protect OHA's trust assets and serve OHA's beneficiaries as prudently and effectively as possible. After the State Salary Commission raised our Board of Trustees' pay, right, to fix longstanding this uh disparities amongst the trustees, right, and uh compared to other organizations, uh mahalo to that commission, by the way. Um, since we're the ones paid elected officials in the state and hadn't has a rate, uh hadn't had a rate since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, this decision led this Ad-Hoc Committee to recommend that we rise the tide and lift all boats by OHA by increasing sixty-nine percent of staff salaries as we recognize the essential work and commitment to OHA's mission and serving native Hawaiians. Our tax report discussed the history of the situation since two thousand and twenty-one, the reorg of OHA by past Administrator on the revisions of the new org charts before and after current CEO Stacy Ferrero. We also reviewed the wage bands, which positions were on the wage bands, and researched the State Department of Human Resources Practices, the D Herd website, and BLS wage bands and other salary data. Um, there are state policies that are already in place to assist in salary schedules and policies, and it was the Ad-Hoc Committee's decision to recommend that OHA utilize these resources as a starting point to these salary recommendations. OHA being a semi-autonomous agency does not need to follow the state exactly, and we can make our own policies as a Board of OHA. Uh, we chose to recommend that we meet or exceed, I want to shine light on that, meet or exceed these guidelines to be the employer of choice. Uh, in summary, the recommendations that we made were, number one, to follow the wage bands from the state salary schedules of bargain union, bargain bargain union oh-three and oh-four for white-collar workers, um excluding executives. Now, the CEO, Chair, and HR team uh will continue to work out those salary ranges as long as the budget allows. I want to make note of that for everyone here. Uh, number two, to match or exceed, again, right, to match or exceed the starting salaries of other state departments on BU oh-three and BU oh-four SR schedules. Um, number three, add all positions to the salary schedules. This allows everyone to be on a salary schedule with the opportunity to move up in steps. On number four, exceptions should only be made for highly specialized positions. And number five, increases by percentage recommendations, which can be viewed in the report, the Ad-Hoc Report. Sixty-nine percent of all current workforce, seventy-eight positions would receive salary increases for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and all staff would receive a three percent inflation uh increase for fiscal year twenty-seven as budget allows. Um, and this is recommended by the Ad-Hoc Committee to take effect July first. Um, you know, finally, we had a, uh, we had to calculate through working documents the total budget. The budget is based on the one hundred fifty-two positions. If all positions were filled with zero vacancies, that's what this report was based on in the budget. Um, these numbers may look much higher than the current fiscal year twenty-five budget. Uh, but the current fiscal year twenty-five figures will end with thirty positions vacant. I want to, I want to make note of that. Um, our Ad-Hoc Committee estimated numbers are, like I said, at zero vacancies. And in the event that all positions are filled, and which may not be, I just want to shine light on that. The positions may not be filled, but this is the budget we're creating for to shine light on those uh filled positions, vacancies. And uh the approximate uh increase would be eleven percent in total personnel and fringe benefits. These are the recommended salary guidelines for administration to work from. Uh, it is not the end of the salary reviews. I want to make note of that also. Um, administration needs to continue to review all OHA and make adjustments going forward. Uh, we did also recommend forming an Ad-Hoc Committee every three years uh to review uh the budget as well as our pay. Um, no one should be waiting four to five years, right, for any increase. Uh, this is as OHA's budget allows, is one I want to shine light on as well, again. Um, also, with this lift, we expect everyone to rise to the occasion and work to their fullest potential for OHA and our beneficiaries, which I think we're all doing, and I don't doubt that. Um, mahalo Chair Kahle, um, and like I said, at the end of the day, it wasn't an easy task, but this committee uh fully supports our recommendation. And we look forward to getting the support of our fellow board members here today and our employees. So mahalo Nui, um Chair, if the other members have questions or comments, I'll like to open up the floor to them.
Yeah, I think we'll, um, thank you, Chair, for that um that summary. I think what we should do is open it up for testimony.
Can they hear anything out here?
I'm sorry, Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Ahuna, we're gonna go to um uh OHA staff uh testimony to hear from our employees. Um, since uh Chair Souza is is done giving a high-level summary overview of his report, after we've heard from our uh different testifiers, both in person and online that have signed up, um then we'll go to trustee discussion. Yeah. Yeah, in person's fine. So Lehuwa, who do we have signed up to speak?
In person first, we have Kale Hanes.
Kale Hanes. And I want to mahalo Kale for being the first one come to the table. For those of you in uh our online world, Kale is um uh a key part of, and maybe the only one, uh in charge of our Hale Noelo and our critical Papakila databases uh and really important work uh that we do here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So mahalo Kale. And we're gonna recognize each testifier for five minutes, and you can use up to five minutes of your time.
Thank you. Aloha Chair, aloha Trustees, uh aloha Ohana. Um, mahalo for the opportunity to share some manao regarding action item BOT number twenty-five oh-seven. As a legacy staff member for, with eighteen years of service at OHA, specifically overseeing the Papakila Database, which happens to be the largest repository online of Ika Hawaii in the world, and more recently, the Kipuka Database and the current seeded Lance Inventory Contract, I wish to express my strong support not only for the proposed, but revisions to our compensation programs and OHA's culture. And I wanted to introduce, I I really was hesitant to come to the table, but I wanted you to put a face to the work and uh my name as well and introduce you to introduce myself to some of you who I may not be as familiar with. Um, the work is very valuable. Um, I'm not a position, I'm a person, I'm a part of your Ohana. So mahalo Nui to the pig for the energy, time, and effort. So mahalo nuu to the pig for the energy, time, and effort to make this a priority. I'm one of the staff who Chair Suzie identified as a dedicated staff member who has not received a pay raise since two thousand and sixteen. These reforms are not merely a matter of administrative adjustment. There are fundamental steps toward ensuring that our organization is pono to its current employees while being able to attract the best talent available. The steps you are taking to align our compensation programs and current market opportunities is critical to our mission and the well-being and retention of Oha staff. However, as we move forward with these necessary reforms, I urge the board to address this issue in a comprehensive, rather than piecemeal manner. Please consider turning your attention to the establishment of organization-wide SOPs, identifying, valuing, and supporting critical staff outside of leadership that are not only producing, but furthering Oha's strategic initiatives and reputation in the community. And finally, fostering a positive work environment. I believe that a mission-driven organization is essential to the value, the impact, and the work performed by all of our staff. The significance of our work cannot be limited to counting transactions, but should also include qualitative impact that we have for not only our Ohana, our Aina, but our Lahui. In conclusion, I strongly support the proposed reforms to our compensation programs and encourage the board to build upon this progress by prioritizing the review and evaluation of individual positions, as well as considering the broader impact of our employees' work. While our staff is deeply attracted, deeply dedicated to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and its mission, their service should not come at a great financial or career sacrifice. Such policies are inequitable and do not foster the retention of talent. The board should set a higher bar to create a workplace that not only attracts the best talent, but also honors and values the contributions of our Ohana. Mahalo nuu for your time.
Thank you, Kale.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carla Hostetter.
Aloha, Carla. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, aloha Chair, aloha trustees. Uh, Carla Hostetter, I am the Director of Oha's Research and Evaluation Division. Closer. Okay, uh, mahalo for the warm invitation to provide testimony on today's issues that impact our Oha family. I did want to take the opportunity to speak in support of the wage band adjustments and the reassessment of specific positions. First, I'd like to thank the Ad Hoc Committee uh for the time and the dedication to this work. It's incredibly meaningful to us uh to know that you see and care to address the inequities in Oha's compensation. If I may, I would just like to highlight um specifically our research systems administrator positions uh which oversee the primary public-facing research databases, including Papa Kilo, uh the digital archive, our Kipuka G I S system, and our Native Hawaiian databook. Uh, as you are aware, the Papa Kilo provides the space and processes to preserve our most valuable Hawaiian historical documents and to perpetuate Hawaiian history for future generations and across the world. Our Kipuka G I S system provides a window into Hawaiian land, culture, and history, linking Aina with historical records. Um, our Native Hawaiian databook compiles all Native Hawaiian data uh and provides access to that data to our Native Hawaiian beneficiaries, so really key aspects of our work here at Oha. Uh, the oversight of these systems requires highly specialized work, including but not limited to the technical expertise in database management, website development, G I S mapping, in addition to the historical, the Hawaiian historical background that's necessary to carry out the work um and contract management as well. So this combination of skill sets is extremely rare, making market wage rate highly competitive. The current Oha wage band do not reflect um adequate and fair equitable compensation for the necessary level of work as it's evidenced by our G I S position of over three years. Um, and I do want to take a special moment to thank Kale Hansen for remaining steadfast in his dedication to the work uh in the face of these inequities. Um, and even taking on, as he mentioned, additional kuliana to oversee all of our systems to keep them alive while we have these vacancies. Um, therefore, I humbly request the board's support to increase the wage bands and salaries for the research administrator's system administrator positions. So that our beneficiaries can access the high level of data and historical information that they do deserve. Thank you guys for your time. Mahalo.
Thank you, Carla.
Our next speaker is Keith Gutierrez.
Keith Gutierrez. Yep, I want to welcome Keith, um along with Carla, both key members of our research and evaluation team. Keith is our uh research and evaluation manager, so thanks for joining us, Keith. You recognize five minutes.
All right, thank you. Aloha Chair, trustees, and Ohana. Yeah, mahalo for inviting us to speak on this item. I do appreciate the topic being raised, addressed, and seriously pursued by everyone here. I appreciate that we're addressing compensation and importantly, doing so with more transparency this time. The last adjustment nearly four years ago was far less clear and as such harder for many of us to understand. This effort is a great step in the right direction, and I'm deeply appreciative of your folks' effort. I had a chance to review the meeting packet and wanted to raise three concepts for you folks to consider regarding this action item and potentially make plans for what implementation by administration looks like. One, uh develop clear pathways to management and fair pay transitions. If we want to encourage staff to stay with Oha long-term, pursue professional development, dedicate their careers to our work, and eventually move into management roles, ensure that the transition in pay reflects the increase in responsibility. Pay progression should be seamless and motivating. A step-three staffer moving into a step-one management role should receive a raise proportionate to the increased responsibilities, not simply be reset lower on the scale because of different differing minimum qualifications. We need to ensure the new system fully accounts for long-term tenure. Employees nearing the top of their pay band often face reduced incentive to pursue upward movement if it means starting over at the bottom of another scale. A clear pathway to management built into the pay system would be an improvement from the previous system. In the past, the system lacked equity. For instance, there were cases where seasoned staffers experienced only minor pay increases after moving into management, despite significant increases in workload and accountability. If we don't want employees to leave to gain supervisory or management experience to move up the ranks here at Oha, we not only need to find ways to foster that in-house, we also need to ensure the pay structure reflects this as well. Two, establish equity and compensation based on scope and responsibilities. Previously, certain position types, for example, managers, were paid uniformly regardless of their program's size, scope, or strategic complexity. That meant no, that meant no additional compensation when a manager's team grew in size or scope through departmental or functional consolidation or through added F T Es, as well as no adjustment based on competitiveness of their roles in the public or private job markets. While I truly appreciate the greater transparency and thoughtful approach being taken by the current H R leadership as well as the board, many staff still haven't received a clear explanation of how their pay was determined using the prior experience score system, particularly after the two thousand and twenty-one reorganization, when they had to reapply for positions in new pay bands. I caution simply applying percentage-based increases based on current salary alone, especially when those salaries were set through an unclear and inequitable process. As a part of this effort, I highly encourage there be a retroactive review to determine whether current pay accurately reflects the increased scope and complexity of employees' roles since the last pay in two thousand and twenty-one. Three, consider role-specific factors and market differences. Pay bands should also allow for differentiation within the same classification level based on unique qualifications and skills required, scope of services covered, number of positions supervised, budgets overseen, or market competitiveness of specific roles. The new system acknowledges this need in certain areas by allowing for flexibility outside of the standard pay bands. That same principle should be applied across all positions. Uniformity in pay bands is important for fairness, but true equity requires nuance and recognition of the unique realities of each role. In closing, this feedback focuses on structure, especially for employees who are affected by the two thousand and twenty-one reorganization and whose compensation has not kept pace with increased responsibilities, workloads, or supervisory demands. These considerations are about right sizing the new system and ensuring fairness and equity through the base pay structure. To move forward with a system that is both fair and sustainable, I humbly urge the next efforts to include a revisitation between staff and management roles to ensure pay increases are equitable and logical. Two, reevaluate pay for those who took on significantly greater responsibilities after the reorganization and haven't seen corresponding compensation as a part of this process, conceptually before applying any blanket level percent raises. And three, apply flexibility and differentiation within pay bands based on scope, qualifications, and real-world market comparisons beyond adopting the new pay band structure. Special care should be made to identify unique factors or considerations when placing different positions within the same band along the step system. Finally, mahalo again for leading this effort with transparency and thoughtfulness. I hope these considerations provide useful context as you review the report summary and prepare for implementation by administration. I firmly believe that the work you are doing will strengthen Oha and help support the long-term growth, equity, and retention of our workforce. Mahalo nuu.
Mahalo. Thanks, Keith. Hey, Keith.
Can we borrow your notes?
Yeah, Keith and both Carla, you can submit your written remarks, please, um, into the record, and so we can have that.
Yep.
Both provided, um, along with Kale, very important points for us to consider future. Thank you. Okay?
Our next speaker is Ka'imo.
Ka'imo. Hey, Ka'imo. Welcome, welcome. Ka'imo, part of our, our P S A team.
Aloha, uau, ka'imo, kalanin meos, ten ko'inoa. Um, uahanava ma ke'ia ke'ano no, elua mehapa mau decades. Oi hoi twenty-six, mau makahiki ma'anei. So I know what this is all about, the salary inequities. I've seen mine. But for the committee's report, their assessment, they've done such an excellent job. Over the years, course of time, now it's up for us to come up to par so that we, the Ohana, the staff, Ohana, are treated fairly with equity in terms of salary. It is the right thing to do for us. We give our blood, sweat, and tears, and I only wish that they can stay as long as I have stayed here. I continuously see people leave, and it's with great sadness because betterment is outside of this office. They are all gems that come to this office. But they want to leave. Why? Because the equity is greater outside. I want them to have a good life with a roof over their heads, and we all know the cost of living to put a roof overhead, our heads. My son, the engineer, applied, interested to work here, but the choice was better beyond the shores of Hawaii Nathan. He now resides in Tennessee, working for the county of Knoxville in Tennessee, engineer. Why couldn't it have been equitable for him to stay home, to be with me? So I ask you to please support the committee's ad hoc report assessment and due diligence because I truly love this organization. We can do better. The mission has to be reached with true success, and I know what success is. We haven't achieved that. We could do much better. Housing is a crisis, we all know that. And it's getting harder for even those with degrees to remain here. And to we do as much as we do and we receive less for a great work. So I truly humbly sit here before you to accept the good work of the Ad Hoc Committee's recommendation and move it forward so that we, the team, the Ohana of Oha, can remain here as long as I have. I don't want to see people leave because we are all gems. I've seen gems go, come. And that breaks my heart. And I don't want any heartbroken gems to be going because there is a better opportunity out here. Our mission is so important to the betterment of our Lahui, and I only ask that we can do it in a kakou, me'ke aloha. Holo mua pono. Aloha, me'ke aloha, uau, ka'imo.
Mahalo. Next, just apart.
Our next speaker is Kevin Chak.
Kevin. Kevin, I knew you'd make it to the table.
Thank you, Chair.
Kevin leads our uh information technology team, so we welcome you here.
Hi, um, my name is Kevin Chak, and I'm the interim I T director at Oha. Um, I'm testifying the action item twenty-five um dash zero seven. Um, I wanted to express my sincere gratitude to the board chair, ad hoc committee, um board of trustees, and Oha executive leadership team for inviting us to testify to the action items. Um, your initiative in bringing this action item to the board's consideration is greatly appreciated. Regarding the salary increase system, um, I believe the approach uh where the salary increase decreases for the higher salaries is a great idea. By utilizing um this system to address the concerns of our low-paid employees, uh, we can boost the morale across the team. Um, this thoughtful strategy ensures that um everyone feels valued and recognized for the um contributions. Um, I have more, but I'm gonna save it for the next um action item to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, just apart.
Okay, I believe that was our last person in person, and we're gonna move to.
Is there anyone in person that would like to come up and testify from the board? Elise? Okay, Elise.
Aloha, everyone. Aloha, kakou. Good morning, trustees and admin and my fellow employees. I'm very nervous. I chose research because I like working behind the scenes. I love research. I love doing it. I love talking about it. I love educating our community about what we learn from it. Um, but I struggle with staying at Oha because it's financially hard. Um, I struggle with deciding to continue staying in Hawaii because it's financially hard. And just as one example, because there are so many examples of how Hawaii is the most expensive place to live without the right jobs and opportunities to allow people to afford it. This is a recent graph that shows the most expensive states and um to maintain a home. So even after people own a home, Hawaii is the most expensive state to maintain a home because of utilities, taxes, and fees. It's twenty-nine thousand dollars a year on average to maintain a home, which is thirty-eight percent greater than it was in two thousand and twenty. So that inflation and that cost of living is what we are dealing with in our personal lives. Okay, yes, thank you. Um, so we know from research, we know from our life experiences, from talking to our families, that native Hawaiians are among the most fragile, vulnerable communities across the state. Whether or not we're looking at the fact that forty percent of homeless people counted in the annual P I Ts are identified as native Hawaiian, whether or not you're looking at their overutilization in the Department of Human Services programs, food stamps, childcare benefits, needing foster care. We are here to address these issues, but we also need to have the mana to be able to fight on behalf of our Lahui. We need to have the mana to be able to come to work, to focus on our full-time job, and to know that we can live here, afford to have our families here, afford the cost of living. And so I want us to thrive and not just to survive. And it took a long time for me to say that for myself, too. I spent my entire adult career caring about native Hawaiian health and health disparities because I watched my mom go through several cancers as a young person. I want to use the years of experience that I have, learning, studying about it, working in the community. But I constantly am also feeling like I am sacrificing my own well-being to do that. And it's cumulative. Every year that we choose to make a low salary, that's a year where we're not saving. We're not investing in our children's future. We're not investing in our own stability. And like Ka'imo said, Oha has so many wonderful employees. I have met people who are passionate but who have so many different ideas about how to help the Lahui, how to help Hawaiians. And like Ka'imo, I want us to be able to hire. And like Ka'imo, I want us to be able to hire and keep good staff. But the research and evaluation pie off, for example, has always been short-staffed. We're short-staffed, three analysts, and we have been in the over two years that I've been here, over two years. And a big part of that is the compensation and the workplace culture around feeling valued. So, moving forward, I want to of course always thank God, the community, all of the people that helped to create OHA for this opportunity that I have. Because I get to follow my passion. I get to follow my dream, and I get to follow my goals. And I put myself through college. I had a single mom. I'm the oldest of four sisters. And I only had these opportunities because of Hawaiians who came before me and advocated for native Hawaiian health disparities, native Hawaiian education disparities, and created programs and grants that I benefited from greatly. And I want to be a part of continuing that for our community. So, um, in summary, I really am excited about the conversation that you folks are having today. I'm really thankful to trustee Souza and the ad hoc committee for reflecting on the real challenges we're having here because it's it's not fun to talk about bad things. That's my whole life. It's like everyone's having fun. And I gotta talk about the disparities. I gotta talk about it. So, um, thank you again for your time and opportunity to share.
Thank you, Elise. Anyone else in person? Anyone else in person that would like to testify? Nichi. Nichi Ozawa, valued member of our legal team. Aloha, Nichi.
Pardon me, I I wrote down things that I want to say. This action item affects me directly. Um, today is my last day serving at OHA, so the timing is very auspicious. Sorry. Aloha, Chair and members of the board. I respectfully urge you to approve this board action item, which yes, seeks to address pay inequities at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. To be an employer of choice, but also demonstrates the board's commitment to compensation advocacy for our core staff so that we're not taken for granted, undervalued, and left to struggle personally and financially to be able to continue this good work. I submit to you that bringing staff salaries to level that is competitive and commensurate with the quality and volume of work that is undertaken by OHA's staff is long overdue. Competitive and equitable salaries are essential to honoring the contributions of our staff, recognizing and valuing the experienced personnel and attracting new talent who are committed to OHA's vision. We can't just expect committed and qualified people to come here and be dedicated to do this work because they want to do it and suffer personally and to their detriment. I mahalo the kuliana and work that this ad hoc committee has bravely undertaken. I know that at times this can be highly scrutinized, which you know, has been in the press for other increases in salaries for public officials. But it needs to be done, and it, like I said, it's long overdue. I mahalo the board's leadership and thoughtful consideration reflected in these proposals. And I pray that you will continue to advocate for fair and forward-looking policies that support people who carry out the vital work of this agency. Advocating for our beneficiaries is not just an outward-looking kuliana. We have beneficiaries right here at OHA that were day and night committing and spending more of their time to OHA than their own ohana, than their own families. You might not be native Hawaiian yourself, like myself, but my keiki are. So I should be able to advocate for them and their beneficiaries of OHA as well. In summary, let OHA be a place where committed public servants are empowered to thrive, not just merely get by. Mahalo, Nui Loa, for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Nichi. Anyone else in person would like to testify? Kelewa, online.
Our next speaker is Edna Johnson.
Aloha, Edna.
Hi, aloha. Good morning. Good morning, Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Souza, trustees, Kapo'hana Stacy, Kapu'nu'ikihau, and the awesome OHA ohana. I just wanna share a little bit of my manao today on what's on the agenda. Uh, I'm Edna Johnson, grant supervisor, and I want to share my mahalo first of all um, for uh all of you for listening to the staff and putting into action what is on the agenda today. I appreciate that we are heard and that action will be considered today in placing the salary compensations and telework policy forward. I believe this will truly support dedicated staff and recruit the high-level OHA ohana we have here and all who have the heart to serve in our lahu'i in the now and in the future. Mahalo for allowing us to share our manao today. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Edna.
Our next speaker is Kahale Lani.
Aloha, Kahale Lani.
My name is Kahale Lani, K'afekani, I'm. And before I give my testimony, I'd like to give my aloha to all of you, uh Chair Kahale, Vice Chair Souza, um, Chair Emeryta, um, Anike Hulu, um, our administrative leadership team, um, as well as any kupuna, makua, community members in attendance, and most especially to every single employee. You know, no matter how small you think your rank or importance in this organization is, um, you know, these are employees that have committed themselves to this honorable, honorable work. Because I believe that it is an absolute honor to serve our native Hawaiian people. And um, these are employees who have held on, um, not quit um, despite many challenges that may be associated with this job, and yet still show up. Yeah, show up day after day. Deadline after deadline, um, no matter how many tasks are being given. They're these are employees who choose, yeah, choose to not give up, who fight, strive, pray to give the public a different face of OHA, yeah? Show that OHA is is a fresh face and new. And um, for this work to those employees and all of you in attendance, you know, I see you, I see your work, and I see your hard, your hard efforts that you pour into our community. And so for that, I to give you all my deepest aloha. So trustees, you may or may not remember me from my previous role as um trustee Mililani Trasse Secretary um for Hilo. Um, and for the public who may not know, as trustee aides, um, we're only hired temporarily, yeah? As long as our trustee is in office. Once the trustee is done, you you don't just automatically get reassigned to a different role at OHA. You have to reapply. And so, um, although our job is not permanent, you know, we we are given the opportunity to reapply, and so I was blessed, um, to now serve as the Administrative Assistant for our land division um, under our exemplary leader, Ms. Lori Walker, and our amazing team in our land paia. But my testimony today is a little different. Uh, my testimony today is in full support of the hard efforts in the ad hoc committee's recommendations of this salary increase, um, action item beauty twenty-five oh seven. And my support for this salary increase is unique because of the fact that looking at page ten, um, in the electronic folder, looking at the flow chart, according to this, um, I actually don't qualify for this increase. Because of my start date, according to HR, um, it's for the position that you are currently in. And so for me, that was June fourteen, twenty-twenty-four. So according to this information, I don't qualify for the increase, but my tears is not because I don't qualify. It's because I think that all of those who do are so, so well-deserving. I see our employees, um, sacrifice time, effort, you know, and put in so much hard work for our for our people, for the I to carry on the ideas that are decided by this prestigious board, you know? And and to kakou our our wonderful leadership team. I am a person of faith in my personal life. I'm a hau'opakau for my church, and I honestly can say that I I pray for everyone above and below in this organization because it's important. It's important for OHA to be a pu'u honu'atour Hawaiian people. Just as much as they're so excited to buy that Maoli concert ticket or that CNHA or whatever attendance, they should be excited to come to OHA. They should feel that excitement to want to run to OHA or if times is hard to know where they can come and seek assistance. And and the change starts from within. If mana imauli'ola is so important to us and this board, we need mana imauli'ola inside of OHA too. And so I, um, you know, I, again, my testimony is in support of this raise, and um, I just ask that the trustees consider, consider fully supporting it, and I thank you for this opportunity to testify.
We have a few people online, but they have not raised their hand, so I think they might be testifying on the next action item. And if I am wrong, if you're online, can you raise your hand if you'd like to testify on this action item? Twenty-five oh seven.
Okay, well, wanna mahalo all of our OHA staff and employees, both in person and online for having the courage to um come up and provide your manao. I think it was very, very important. Uh, this time we'll recognize our CEO, our Kapo'hana, for any remarks she may have before we um place the action item on the table for discussion.
Mahalo, Chair, and I just wanna mahalo um the team for coming out. And regardless if you testified or not, your presence, and I know many are just watching too. Um, so the fact that you may not be physically present, I know that you are all very much, um, not just concerned, but I'm wanting to make sure that um the leadership, and when I say leadership, I'm saying I'm saying it inclusive of the Board of Trustees as well as our administration, that this gets resolved. And so, you know, Chair has been going around and he's been getting to know all of our paia, which is great because I think it's really important that as new leaders, and I did the same when I came on, is to make sure that we we understand what is the pulse, right? I mean, we we are inheriting, right? Um, the the things that have occurred in the past, and for us to be able to bring um resolution and closure to things of the past, we need to be um able to understand what the issues are, and that comes directly from you folks. So mahalo to Chair for doing his rounds with with the team. Um, and the message was no different when I came on, that salary was a big issue, a- as was the next item on the agenda as well. And I'm excited and um pleased that today we'll we'll have some resolution. With that said, um, I I do wanna say that, you know, last year, we did the one-time cola payments. And that was our leadership's um attempt in the interim until we could get to the biennium budget, right? Um, to be able to put a little bit of relief. It wasn't the it wasn't the absolute solve, but it was a temporary relief till we could till we could get to a permanent solution, which is on the table today. So I wanna mahalo the ad hoc committee. Um, again, this is one ohana um, from our leadership and taking this on because it is it's a pervasive issue. And um, and it's there are no easy answers, and this is a very complex um work that needs to be um accomplished. And you know, with all of your testimony, you know, Keith, you did an amazing job really outlining some of the intricacies of the complexities that are involved. Um, I'm excited and I'm pleased, as I said, that um we'll get some resolution today. And I I also wanted to mention that I had a chance to um go over the the AI with and the the um, what's being proposed with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the ad hoc. And, you know, we did talk about performance management because it wasn't um included in the report. But I think it's important that I do share that the performance management implementation that is going to be rolled out shortly is a critical piece of compensation. Because the work that um Chair, Vice Chair, and and the committee put together is the starting point, right? That's the re-leveling. That's to get everybody up to standard uh market. And and what I did appreciate, it was not just meet, but it was to exceed. And that's what it's gonna take, because this work is heavy. The kuliana is big. And so we're gonna have to not just meet, but exceed to get the best, the brightest, the most resilient to come here. And um, so I appreciate I appreciate the work, but the implementation of performance manager is important, and I just, if you indulge me just for a couple more minutes, the reason why that's important is because we will be doing merit increases annually, right? So it's not just, we put you at this level, and now another three years gotta occur before you see your next increase. Because we do have these gems and because exemplary work is happening on a continuous basis, that has to be recognized through our increases in compensation annually. So it will be layered upon this good work that has been done, that's on the table today. Additionally, it has been talked about professional development, training, um, creating pathways. Um, all of that comes with professional development, and those are line items in our current budget that are being put forth in front of the board. And so I will take this opportunity to champion those requests, those appropriations, because the board will have to decide on on those. Because there that's a large um budget request, because it's not just the fees, the conference fees, but it's also the travel many times that accompanies that. And so that's a big investment in people, right? When we talk about valuing our staff, and there is a great desire to improve their skill sets, their knowledge base, having tools in the toolbox, because our our lahu'i, we're we're always evolving. And the circumstances in which we have to live continue to evolve too. So so must our skill sets. So those are appropriations that we are gonna ask this board to also consider. And then also to have pathways um to um to leadership um, or even just uh higher aspirations in in terms of the leveling of the position that you're in. That will require training. And so when we set our performance goals with this with our new rollout of our performance measurement, as I talked to um per- performance management, as I spoke about yesterday, um, those are part of the goal setting. There's gonna be a large part of that process is ensuring that we are very cognizant and aware of what are your professional and personal goals and how this organization supports that. And that needs to be articulated in the performance goals, and it is our job as supervisors, managers, leaders, to ensure that we can support that happening. So not everything is encompassed just by salary, although there they are inextricably tied performance management and salary compensation. So I I just I thank the board because we have many opportunities to to raise all of the boats um, right now, and it it doesn't just stop with um the board action at the table, but it's also gonna be in the board actions in approving um our budgets. So mahalo Chair, mahalo uh Chair of the ad hoc, Vice Chair, um, and trustees.
Aloha, Cece. We have one more person. Raise your hand, yeah? Looks like it's Ke'aloha. Ke'alo' Pishora. Aloha, Ke'aloha.
Aloha, everybody. Sorry, I was slow getting on um to address this agenda item for the salary adjustments. I wanna thank you all, all of the trustees, for supporting the ad hoc committee in doing this uh important work. I wanted specifically to um advocate on behalf of, there is a small group that are excluded uh in this uh increase, um, which I think they shouldn't be excluded. Which I think they shouldn't be excluded, I think they should be included, I think it has to do with dates. Kehelani was addressing it, um, I think all of uh. Our employees do such amazing and wonderful work, and um. Uh, and I think this is a beginning, and I kakou all of the testimony. That came previously as well, but I do wanna thank all of the trustees for supporting this work. Um, I mean unfortunately, I probably will not be a, a. Benefit, but it, it benefits all of our employees all at together. And to uplift Oha collectively, so um I just wanted to chime in and say that. And mahalo you folks and mahalo for um. You know, being bold and strong and trying to strengthen Oha overall. That's all, mahalo.
Aloha Kialoha. Okay, last chance, anyone else? One once, going twice, okay, Chair recognizes our Ad-Hoc Committee Chair again, uh Trustee Suzo.
Mahalo Chair Keheli and, and mahalo Kapu Hana, I, I wanted to reemphasize what you had said about the uh performance evaluation program. Um, I wanted to say that is a conversation that came up uh with this Ad-Hoc Committee, um, and. Especially when we're reviewing the Ad-Hoc Report with you, uh, with you, and um, we do feel that it is. Very, very important to have that implemented, and it should work hand in hand moving forward, and again, uh, to the testifiers earlier, our employees. This is just a baseline to meet and exceed, and I'm, I'm telling you that this Ad-Hoc Committee had a heavy lift at the beginning, and now. Uh, if this is approved, it goes to administration and, and, and Stacy and her team, as well as Corey and HR. Will have that task going forward to implement, so mahalo.
Okay, mahalo um Chair Suzo. So at this time, I'd like to bring a motion to the table so that we can open it up for discussion for our trustees, so the Chair recognizes. The Ad-Hoc Committee Chair Suzo to read the motion.
Mister Chair, I'd like to move to accept the report summary of the Ad-Hoc Committee to examine Oha staff salaries dated May 2nd, twenty twenty-five. And adopt the Ad-Hoc Committee's staff salary recommendations and preliminary personnel budgets for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six and fiscal year twenty twenty-seven biennium budget. As set forth in Attachment A.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, trustees, um, it is uh now on the table for discussion, Chair recognizes. Trustee Akina.
Thank you Chair, and uh thank you to all who have been involved, the committee members. As well as administration in bringing to us a, a wonderful proposal today. The first thing I wanna say, in fact, I'll just limit it to this, is I'd like to hear some response to. A point brought up by one of our testifiers today, that we um. Have to look at some protocol issues as to what we can vote on today, and she suggested we refer this. To counsel.
Thanks for bringing up that question, uh, Trustee Akina, I'll um. Recognize our Board Counsel, uh, Naevi to, and also Everett, if you would like to, to um. Um, provide clarity to the rules that govern a permitted interaction group versus the rules that govern an ad hoc committee.
So at the time that this ad hoc committee was formed, it, it was formed as such and not as a, a permitted interaction group. Uh, under ninety-two, two point five B one. Um, and so. The, yes, as an ad hoc committee, um. The, the committee was comprised of two board members and also, I believe, our HR. Director, um. So the issue before the board, um. I believe can be brought under ninety-two, two point five A, um. Should the board wish to err on the side of caution, however, um, we can certainly consider. Um, voting on the recommendations at a subsequent meeting. Um, but certainly the argument can be made that it is properly brought before ninety-two, two point five A. And, and can be voted on today.
Everett?
Uh, I concur with Board Counsel's um opinion, and I don't have anything further to, to add. Um, again, referencing the uh action item that uh set up this uh ad hoc committee. Um, and, you know, reference to our bylaws um, on, on those actions, thank you.
So just to clarify, the statute um clearly articulates that this ad hoc committee is not a permitted interaction group, and as such is exempt. From permitted interaction group resi- restrictions and regulations?
Um, uh, this is um one form of a permitted interaction between members. Uh, communications between uh two board members, um, not as, you know, allowed for, excuse me, as a. A permitted interaction group, um, under a different provision of that same section, uh, HRS ninety-two uh dash two point five. Um, so it, it's another form of permitted interaction between members.
Yeah, thank you, so trustees, both our Board Counsel and our General Counsel both opine that this um board can move forward with this action item. Thank you trustee for raising that, did you wanna raise uh anything subsequent?
Just to follow that, um, I, I understand uh that we can go forward and vote on the action item that's raised now. I, I just want to indicate that while I'm favorable toward the um. Second part of the action item, the actual specific proposal, um, it. I would feel more comfortable with more time to research that. I think that uh we've looked at a lot of good models, uh, including the. Alignment with the state salary uh practice. But as Kapu Hana has pointed out, there are some other factors, non-salary in particular. Uh, that go into a holistic program for. Attracting and retaining employees, and uh. I, I wanna make sure that the, the best of our minds have been able to put in a, a good deal of time working on. On coming up with that, and, and in particular, uh, would, would like to see what the administration recommends with regard to that. Um, very clearly, the first part of today's action item is a kuliana of the board, and I'm very proud of our board. In stepping in and uh standing up for our ohana here at Oha. And uh showing to the people who work here. That we care deeply for them and are proud of them and want them to be able to thrive, as was said earlier. That's our kuliana, on, on a policy level, as to particulars in terms of the administration of. Of how wages should be administered, I'd, I'd like administration to be able to speak to that. In terms of its kuliana to go, to manage, thank you.
Thanks trustee Akina, I think trustee Huna had raised his hand earlier, so Chair recognizes trustee Huna.
Um, thank you Chair, um, my, mine is more, um, I, I had a few questions too, so. The reason why I'm asking this is today we're voting on actually this. This issue right now, we're gonna vote on it right now, and, and, and the reason why I felt a little bit uncomfortable with voting on it right now is. Because I heard a lot of new things that, that came out, and one of them, you know, clear pathways, establish equities based on scope. And um, listening to some of the, the people tha- that came up to speak, I mean, they, they represent decades of, of Oha. And um, for, for me, they, they, they said some powerful things and um. Um, these people are important to not just me, but to, I think, our family at, at Oha. Um, they, they stuck with it the ho- the whole time, but one of the things they also talked about, and I want us to be. Be uh to maybe the committees, and I appreciate the committees doing this, uh, Chair Suzo, I, I. This is some um massive lifting, you know, my back is sore right now and I appreciate you, so. Um, but they, they, they also mentioned something, the twenty twenty-one uh leadership responsibilities and what went, what happened and. And some people uh got lost in, in, in all of this, and, and I wanna make sure that we recognize these. These, these inequities that, that, that was take, being taken place, but, but, but more so, um. I, I, I'm hoping that administration can weigh into more on making sure that. Our, our people i- i- in our administration, uh, uh, you know, is, is being taken care of, um. The people that came up to speak, you know, was, was very heavy for me, um, I, I, they've been here before all of us, you know, a lot of them, and. And, you know, I, I don't know how years of service, you know, uh, take into consideration on, on, on their, their pay and. But, you know, I, I, I just wanna make sure that things are clear and people understand, because there's people being working here all of ten years and there's. Still at the lowest pay, and I just wanna make sure that, that, that the, that we follow through with these things, but I didn't, I, I. It's a tough job for this committee, and I'm not saying they're not doing a good job, but I'm just happy you guys are bringing it to the table, because this is very important. To who we are in, in, in Oha, and, and, you know. For me, we, we, we're only as good as our people at, at Oha, so I, I just wanna thank. You know, the, the work that they've been doing so far up to this point to um working with. These challenges, but please, uh, um, I, I just wanted to know if we're gonna vote on this, or we might hold off a little bit.
Thanks trustee Huna, Chair Suzo?
Mahalo Mister Chair, uh, and mahalo Dan, uh, trustee Huna for your, uh, your concerns, um, I just wanna shine light on the issue at hand. Um, is to adopt the Ad-Hoc Committee's recommended uh staff salary recommendation, sorry. Um, and preliminary personnel budgets for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, like, and shining light, again, this is a baseline. And there's an opportunity for administration to weigh in, and especially as we go through our budgets this next uh couple of weeks, there'll be many, many opportunities. Uh, for that to happen, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands that, so mahalo trustee Huna.
Hey trustee Kakau.
Aloha, I have various points that I wanted to um extend on this conversation, and um I also wanted to gain clarity in terms of. Uh, voting to accept this, if it's possible to include other considerations? Or is that something that we would vote on a, on a later date?
Can you explain the other considerations?
So, um. I'll go over the list of things and I thought, I think it will. So one of the things that I had, um, I had asked in previous time, and if, if, is Corey available to join us at the table?
Mister Chair, at this time, I'd like to bring actually Corey Nakamoto, and, and also Chief of Staff Summer Silva, if you, if you know what, yeah.
Is that okay?
Members of the.
Staff?
Staff, support staff of the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Corey and Summer? Sorry trustee Kakau, go ahead.
Mahalo, I'll just, I'll wait for them to join us. Firstly, I wanna mahalo everyone that was involved in this uh, the creation and as well as the implementation and heavy considerations in doing this. This work, mahalo, uh, I also wanna mahalo those that have shared their manao. Within our organization and for all of the many years of service and. Care to our people in the work that you do, mahalo, uh, Corey, um. At a previous meeting, I had asked about health benefits, and um. Could you share with us today in terms of what? The laws, the rules are in terms of how we can not expand or expand on what is offered. To those that are coming to work at Oha, or those that are currently working at Oha?
Thank you for the question trustee, um, so as state employees, we are all um eligible for the state. Um, benefits through EUTF as well as um ERS, um, we also. I guess, um, not I guess, but we also um participate in the flexible spend, spending uh benefit programs as well. We do um have our own um TDI uh. Insurance coverage, and we are currently looking at um adding on the paid family leave benefit. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what legal um restrictions there might. Might be, I, I know we wouldn't be able to unilaterally change the state benefits, because that's something that um is negotiated. Um, and administered, you know, by, by the state, um. But, but any other additional policies, uh, I, seems that we would have some flexibility.
The reason I ask this is um, when I think of what an employer of choice is. When people are looking to stay within an organization or to apply, a lot of times what we look at is. What are the health benefits? What, what are the incentives, the reasons to stay or to join an organization? And how does that? How is that balanced with our pay? So I think of in yesteryear, the time of our parents or grandparents and before. To have a, a civil position, a civil jobs, to work within the government was a preferred posi- position to, to have. Because you have um, you have your retirement, your pension to think of, you have the. What I would consider good health benefits, um. I have my concerns in terms of the current health benefits, I feel that it's not necessarily um where I feel that. I would prefer us to be at, and part of my question is to see what are the flexibilities and how we can expand on that, so we are an employer of choice. But truly where, we're able to have it where. People wanna stay because they know they're, they're gonna have good healthcare here, how, what more can we do so that this is balanced with what? This report is sharing with us?
Okay, um. Uh, you know, as I, as I shared uh earlier, I, I don't think we would have the ability to change the state's um benefits. But we potentially could look to see what other benefits we might be able to add, for example, um, with the. Maybe additional insurances, for example, like AFLAC, right, which does add additional um insurance. Um, coverages or, or additional voluntary, um, and that could potentially also if we were allowed to. Um, be provided on a pre-tax basis, so that, that would be something that, you know, we could look into.
Yes, I do encourage, and I think it is, um, it would be important for us from an HR standpoint to seek out other ways in which other. Other government bodies within the state of Hawaii and outside of the state of Hawaii, what they are doing to keep happy and healthy employees. I think we need to look at this from a creative standpoint as well, within what we're able to do as a state agency. I know for many that work here, you might have a spouse that works in a non-government position. And the choice when it comes to your health plan, you often decide to go with your partner's health plan, because it far exceeds. The benefits that we at the Office of Point of Affairs can provide, and for me, that, that saddens me, because. I think each and every person that works here, we're, we're constantly, when you look at your paycheck, you're looking at how much is coming out when it comes to your healthcare. And how that affects you, and if it makes sense for you to stay because you wanna have proper healthcare. And there's a certain amount you have to pay, but back in the day, I think it was much better, and I think that that would be part of the advocacy. Is to see how and which, and I would be interested in learning more about that, who are the, the, those that dis- that decide. Within our, our government, what the health capabilities are, and why is it that we keep go- going back and back? And why is it that we keep go- going back and back and back and back in time? Where it's not as good as it used to be. I can imagine why. But I would, I would like that to be explored and we as the Office of Point Affairs, I think it's really important when it comes to our mission and our strategic plan that falls in line with it. And going with that too, when I look at our mission and I think also about our strategic plan, that we implement that where it's not just where we advocated outside of these walls, but that we're able to implement that from within our organization to have happy and healthy employees. And that oftentimes, we, part of what we do, we're going out, we're talking about, okay, we need to empower Hawaiian people. We need to uplift our Hawaiian people. We need to better the conditions. But I think we need to also be examples of that in terms of having people that are happy and healthy and want to work here and so that they're able to perform in the roles that they are. And then that goes to my next point. I mahalo the testimonies of those that shared with us today. And I often think about the value within an organization to have that balance of, yes, it's important to have fresh and new ideas. And at the same time, it's important to have the wisdom of those who have served for many years that might have the understanding that many wouldn't, but because of the years served, they have that. So I think another thing to be considered is the years of service. If we have people that have been here for 10, 15, 20 plus years, when I look at our service awards that we, we visit at the end of the year, I look at those that have been long time running here and I think, jeez, wow, they're hanging in there. But how are we honoring them properly for those years of service? Because they bring so much to the table that a lot of us, we don't always realize because it happens behind the scenes, but they're doing that work and I mahalo them for that. The other point too is, I really hope in implementing some of the proposed actions here is that we have a return of some of the exceptional employees that we've had here at the Office of Point Affairs. Unfortunately, a lot have not continued here. And I hope that becoming more of an employ- employ- employee, employer of choice, that, that will shine a light for those to return back here. Because there's so much talent out there, but we need to have it where people are attracted to come back here. They need to have a very good reason beyond our mission and be, beyond our strategic plan. I had mentioned yesterday as well, a desire to look into kicking kupuna care. Many times as employees here, people, they have to leave for emergency purposes or there's certain kuliana that needs to be met. And I think that, I think that's something that we should look into, maybe a cost analysis or a benefit analysis. Because I know that a lot of people, when they worry about getting to work, being at work, be able to do their kuliana, they're thinking, okay, is my ohana okay? Do I have to leave this to do that? And then they think about what that means in staying in terms of the value and how they can perform. The other point is, I believe every single role is important, every single role. And that needs to be honored. Part of what I heard in the testimony as well is that there are those that might not fit into what these increases would be. And I would like that to be addressed. Is that actually the case? Or if that is the case, how can we balance this out? Or is there a reason why?
Yeah, so I stated in the report and number one, let's take the 24 positions that weren't included, right? It is, these were newer positions created by our CEO, right? Which he did a great job, right? Bringing these to market rates and most of these were directed positions. Reviewing market, market data, internal equity, and that's what we base our report on. But I also want to emphasize that this committee did not look at benefits. This committee was, was tasked to look at budget and salaries. But what you brought up, trustee Akaka, was, was good points moving forward. Like I said, this is to adopt a baseline version and as we discuss budgets moving forward, there's ways this can be worked out. And especially taking in the consideration those testifiers here today, right? Because those employees or our employees were not a part of the ad hoc committee, right? They didn't have an opportunity to weigh in as this report was being put together. And it's like I said earlier, this report was put together the most fair and equitable way that we felt to present to this board. But again, this is a baseline version and this can be adopted and then amended or changed in the future as we implement. Mahalo.
So again, just to make sure I have this clear, so those are positions that were newly created, newly hired.
Newly created, newly hired positions.
And with the understanding that those positions are at the market rate.
At, at, at that time. And now also shining light on the fact that these were positions that were hired a year ago, potentially, right? And so is there room for potential increase? That's something that we can also address and look at in the future as we start to implement moving forward.
Mahalo, I think another way that we can look at this too is to look at organizations that have higher retention rates. Why is that?
Right.
You know, and they can be an example that we can draw from. Yeah, thank you.
Summer, would you like to weigh in on anything?
Yeah, consistent with what trustee Suzo just mentioned. You know, I think going back to the formation of the committee and its, its principal objectives were to correct for existing pay inequities, like that was its primary impetus, right? And then in our report, our, our executive summary of the report itself, I think we make explicit that, you know, at no time is this recommendation intended to have pay inequities persist or worsen. These are guiding principles that we worked in partnership with HR expertise and mindful of the sort of fiscal responsibilities we have in terms of what our budget, our proposed biennium budget going forward can, can sustain long term and, and short term. I also want to point out that the positions that were identified for, I, I think the more accurate statement is future treatment, future addressing, right? Were carved out principally because they were created in recent, like in recent fashion. And the working assumption, the working summary was that those positions were created with the same kind of due diligence that our ad hoc committee undertook within the timeframe that it had to set for market rates and market competitiveness. And the vast majority of the positions that are receiving these increases are those whose salaries have remained flat or have not been addressed since 2021 or 2022 or were, you know, completely sort of omitted from any other kind of salary review in the, in the longer term. So in terms of like setting priorities and being as responsive in this moment with the biennium budget, you know, on our heels essentially and coming out with a report that could be as comprehensive, as equitable, as just, as mindful of all of the testimonies. I, I, I was witness to, even though you weren't in the rooms, everyone who testified today, your stories and your experiences and your, your value was in that room with all of these decision makers. And we had a great diverse cross-representation of people who have more conservative fiscal tendencies, people who have very progressive policies, people who are really steeped in HR, in HR experience. And then also add to that staff experiences, people who were affected by the non-adjustment. It was a very diverse panel. And I think it came together in a really complimentary fashion. And what you see in terms of the recommendation on, on the table today is where everyone who sat on that panel with those diverse perspectives felt like they could land at this time, understanding our budget constraints and what is happening externally as well. It's not lost on us that income disparities are the, are more the rule than the exception. And that if OHA is to live up to its mana'ima'olehola values, both internally and externally, that we have to address that and we have to do that with some urgency.
It's not a livable wage. That includes?
Of Oahu, the $65,868. That is the average median income to live on this island, $65,868. The average median home price on this island is $1.1 million. It's impossible to live on $50,016. And it is unacceptable for the Office of Point Affairs to have, in my opinion, a staff salary that is below $60,000. This ad hoc committee report fixes that immediately. And I think to emphasize what Kapua Hana said, and maybe I'll say it a little bit different way. The recommendations of this committee report, this is a floor, this is not a ceiling. And it is why we will continue to come back at this, is why we have 3% increases in the next year. It's why three years from now, this committee should be reformed. Just like the OHA Salary Commission should be reformed, it should be reconstituted. And we mahalo Tyler Yokepa Gomes and his, his hardworking committee in, in, in the work that they did. The legislature adjourned in early May and allowed the OHA staff or trustee salaries to take effect. And we have to address that for our 120-plus employees that are here while all of us. Rising tide lifts all boats, right? Just like we said earlier. So I really believe that this is important for OHA. People are struggling every single day to live in this state. They live paycheck to paycheck. They struggle to afford the most basic necessities, whether it's housing or for your newborn parent, healthcare, childcare. And so this is a step in the right direction to provide an equitable pay increase to our frontline employees, our legacy employees. And I really believe, you know, it's a, it's a matter of dignity and fairness. And I think it's, I commend the committee for its report. It is not easy and, and it's probably something that is going to make a, a, a very big impact this year. You know, throughout OHA and our employees, so. Let me go to Chair Galiter.
You finish.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Akaka. I recognize trustee Galiter.
Mahalo. I imagine this was done in some form or fashion. And I also want us to think about if not done, is that we look at, we take a careful look at every single position that we have here, every single job description, every single duty. And also keep in mind what kuliana might come in play that is not being done, but will be done. We know it will be done. So I say this to balance with the pay, to balance with the benefits, but to, to balance overall the health and happiness of our employees and what that means. Because many of us, I'll use last night as an example. We're, we're speaking and we're being available to our community into the later hours of the evening. Keeping in mind, we started early in the morning and then we're working through the day, through the evening, and then we're going into, to the night. So we have those that are at job fairs on the weekends, late into the evening, early mornings. And I think there needs to be that balance of time consideration. Some are exempt, some are not exempt. But this, these are all things that we need to keep in mind because we want to be able to retain good employees to be happy here. And I think that's something that maybe can be implemented from an HR standpoint or from a supervisor, manager standpoint, but to have that consideration. Because a lot of what we do, the advocacy that we do within and outside of the walls of the Office of Point Affairs, oftentimes that comes with a sacrifice, sacrifice of personal time that you would have with your ohana, your friends, your community, interests that you have pre-currently or post what you'll be doing at the Office of Point Affairs. But I think, I think that's so important in terms of happy, having a happy and healthy employee and family life. Mahalo.
Trustee Galiter?
Let me get you. Firstly, I just want to say how proud I am to be part of this OHA family today. This is what, this is what family is all about. And we must bring our, our aloha to the table. And everybody has a role and we have a role too. And so, I mean, I'm ready to rock and roll. But I just want to say how thankful I certainly am for the committee to do your great work. And the fact that we did it with a deadline. Because I've been involved with bureaucratic initiatives that are still going years later. So what we can do today is we can take care of the business at hand. And then for those concerns and the disparities that were expressed today, we can address that almost immediately. But we have business to do right now. So having said that, and I thank everybody for coming forward, I'd like to call for the question, if that's appropriate.
Question is called. Do you have a second?
It's already been moved and seconded.
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Huna?
Aye.
Call him.
Stand by. Okay, the question has been called and the chair will now call for the roll call vote for the Board of Trustees for the Office of Point Affairs to accept the report summary of the ad hoc committee to examine OHA staff salaries dated May 2, 2025, and to adopt the ad hoc committee's staff salary recommendations and preliminary personnel budgets for the fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027 biennium budget as set forth in attachment A. Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Lapa?
Absolute yes.
Trustee Galiteria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Suzo?
Aye.
Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
And Chair Fehel.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
Motion is adopted unanimously. Congratulations. Trustees, is it okay? We take a five-minute pause. Go to the restroom and do whatever we need to do. We have